Silent three again, silent three again.
Good morning. The time is now nine thirty-four and State Board of Education work session of May twentieth, two thousand and twenty is called to order. May I please have a motion to approve the agenda in order of priority?
So.
Or a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Marilyn, will you please take the roll call vote?
Yes, Fecto?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Ramos Montini?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tilly is absent for the ti- Tiffany, are you there? Okay, Tilly's absent for the moment. She's she's joining the call shortly. Albridge?
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you very much. At this time, Marilyn will introduce the members of the State Board of Education. Marilyn?
Yes, I'm happy to introduce Dr. Cassandra Albridge, President from Dearborn, Dr. Pamela Pew, Vice President from Saginaw, Ms. Michelle Fecto, Secretary from Detroit, Mr. Tom McMillan, Treasurer from Oakland Township, Ms. Tiffany Tilly, NASB delegate from Southfield, that's the Board's Association, Dr. Judy Pritchett, Co-Chair of the State Board of Education Legislative Committee from Washington Township, Ms. Lupe Ramos Montini, Chair, Ms. Nikki Snyder, Member of the State Board of Education Legislative Committee from Dexter, and Brandy Johnson represents the Governor. She's the Governor's Policy Advisor for Education and Workforce. I'm not sure if she's able to join us or not. Brandy, are you on the call? She may she may join in as she's able. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marilyn. This is a pretty straightforward work session. There will be three presentations and discussion thereafter. The first presentation is on Digital Divide, Computers and Connectivity. Here to present to us in a fashion this morning are Mr. Kyle Garant, Deputy Superintendent of Finance and Operations, and Dr. Vanessa Kiesler, Deputy Superintendent of Educator, Student and School Supports. Gentle people, welcome.
Good morning, Dr. Rice. Good morning, Board. Going to go ahead and share my screen. There we go. And like Dr. Rice said, we're here to share a little bit about the the digital divide in Michigan and more importantly, how we can work to close it. So the first step is to understand the digital divide. You know, how big is it? What does it consist of? And to do that, we reference several sources of data. This is a bit of a hard issue to pin down because you're not only talking about, you know, devices held by schools or the things that, you know, connectivity we can see, but you're talking about homes and students in homes. And so we use a number of data sources to help us understand the the magnitude of the divide. We list them here. There's a couple slightly older ones, the Merit Moonshot data, which is based on a study with three ISDs, the Connect Michigan data, both of those are from two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and eighteen. And then after the pandemic began, and I believe we shared this information with the Board, we partnered with the Michigan Education Technology Leadership Group, or the METL Group, to do two different surveys. The first was a a quick survey at the ISD level. We did we did that in late March and the results were released in early April. And then we did a follow-up survey where METL worked with districts to have districts administer a survey to their parents to get a more fine-grained understanding of connectivity and devices in the homes. And that survey was sent out in early April and then we finalized the results in April twenty-ninth, or I'm sorry, by April twenty-ninth of this year. We were having a conversation about this yesterday and it's it's likely that these results are already dated to some point. We know districts and schools and parents are working to address pieces, especially the device piece right now, possibly the connectivity piece. And this is just a fluid area. The reality changes quickly. But we do have we do have a decent amount of data to understand what we're working with. When we talk about the digital divide, there are really two aspects to it. The first is devices, or Dr. Rice has been saying computers, computers and connectivity. It doesn't always have to be only a computer. There's other devices, iPads and Chromebooks and whatnot. But the point is a device that students can use and staff can use to learn on. In general, a phone is not considered a device in this context, although during the pandemic, certainly I'm sure some kids are learning on phones because that's what's available. But in the long run, we don't want students trying to do their learning on an iPhone. And then the second part, the computers and then the connectivity, you have to be able to access the Internet. And the question that we've been working on is access that can support some form of virtual learning. So as we know, not every not every connection, not all connectivity is strong enough to support Zoom or Teams video or, you know, lots of kids on the on the on the wireless or on the broadband all at the same time. So you we need adequate access that can support that virtual learning. If you're a tech geek and you want to know how that's actually defined, it's defined as at least twenty-five megabits per second download and three megabits per second upload. But I'll be the first to say, I'm not exactly sure what that means. But that is the industry definition that we're using when we talk about adequate or sufficient connectivity. And then there's one more dimension to it. Affordability. Can people buy the computers? Can they buy the connectivity? And is it available? In some cases, there is funding that could help access the connectivity, but the connectivity itself isn't there. And we're talking a little bit more about that. So what do we know? And again, when you triangulate the data from all those data sources I referenced earlier, this result is pretty consistent. So we have good faith that this is a real number and that's what we're working on in terms of closing the divide. So about seventy percent of Michigan students reported having some kind of device at home to use for schoolwork, leaving us about a third of Michigan students who don't. So that's our divide in terms of computers, devices. And then about almost seventy-two percent of Michigan students have Internet access that can support some form of virtual learning. So again, about a third of our students don't have the connectivity they need to engage in virtual learning at a distance. Here's a couple maps from the METL work. On the left is a map of students with devices. So the red indicates very low numbers of devices and then the moving up to the dark green, up to one hundred percent. The white means those are areas that didn't give us their data, so we we don't know. And you can see, you know, decent device coverage, but you can also see where the pockets are where kids don't have adequate access to devices. And then on the right is students with Internet. And again, it's red means one percent, very low numbers of students with adequate connectivity, up to the green, one hundred percent of students with adequate connectivity. This map has less green and more yellow, more orange, more red, some pockets of red where students lack the lack the connectivity that they need. One more note on connectivity, and this is where, as we continue our work to establish greater greater access to connectivity for Michigan students, this gets this is a complicated space. So the map on the left shows that in theory, we have wireless coverage all over the state, almost, minus a couple, a couple areas in the in the Upper Peninsula that are are not covered by wireless carriers. So in theory, if there's wireless coverage, you can use a hotspot and you can access the Internet using wireless. But in practice, I think most of us can look at the map and say, well, I mean, I've been in that part of the Lower Peninsula and there's no cell service there, or there might be enough that you could never stream a video or or whatnot. I know I was over in the thumb back in the before time, you know, back when we went places just before the pandemic. And there was no, 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 the cell service over there is is terrible even just to make, you know, get a text or make a call. So I certainly wouldn't want to be trying to do virtual learning on my with my wireless over there. The map on the right talks about broadband and where broadband is needed. And it's probably the more the more adequate accurate and appropriate map to use when we're talking about where do we need to think about structural approaches to connectivity. So the white shows there's, you know, there's big areas of the state that don't have that broadband access. And when you take those two together, you know, decent wireless coverage plus broadband access, as we work on closing the digital divide, those two pieces of connectivity are going to be critical. And now I will turn it over to Kyle.
Thank you, Dr. Kiesler. And as as Vanessa mentioned, you know, the 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 problem or the issue that we're trying to address is a is a large one and it looks different throughout the state. The same goes for trying to find the resources to invest in ensuring that we can bridge that digital divide. So right now, we think of of five different funding stream or five five different buckets of funds that we have and potentially have access to in order to support districts and community to close that digital divide. So you can see a list of those there and I will talk a little bit more of about each of the five in the preceding slides. Please go ahead and change, please. Thanks, Vanessa. So the the first is is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund or the ESR funds that we have discussed over the last couple of board meetings. It's part of the CARES Act that outlines twelve broad categories, closing the digital divide, both in terms of computers and connectivity, so devices and and access, as well as instructional software or allowable expenditures in that funding stream. As we mentioned before, the ninety percent of the ESR fund or approximately three hundred and fifty million dollars are allocated out to districts via the Title I, their share of Title I for this current school year. To date, as of this morning, we have forty-seven applications that have been submitted. The applications have been open now for twelve days. And you can see in that third bullet there the type of things that folks that have submitted so far are spending some of their resources on. So again, you know, devices, whether computers, laptops, that type of stuff, connectivity, whether it's Wi-Fi, hotspots, or actual supporting service plans to homes, you know, Verizon, Comcast, those type of things. And then a small number of districts that have submitted, you know, to this point have included resources to purchase instructional software. Next slide, please. The Educational Equity Fund or the or the ten percent of the ESR Reserve Fund that we talked about last Tuesday is approximately thirty-eight million dollars that the department will use to establish the Educational Equity Fund. Eligible school districts and consortium of districts will apply and compete for these funds with the primary purpose of reducing the digital divide. So we, as we've had conversations about this, or specifically, and Dr. Rice has been in conversations with superintendents and and other partners throughout our state on this issue. And, you know, there are especially places in the UP and lower northern where you have, you know, distance is the biggest barrier and getting, you know, kind of foundational infrastructure to places is a barrier. And so we have partners who are already working on this issue in those areas and we want to allow them to continue those partnerships and apply for these dollars as a consortium of districts and partners. Next slide, please. The Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund or GEAR Fund dollars is also money that was appropriated to states through the CARES Act. Michigan was allocated a little over eighty-nine million dollars and those dollars go directly to the Governor. MD submitted the broad application for these dollars on behalf of the Governor to the US Department of Education on Monday. We expect to hear back shortly of our approval for that. There are three broad buckets that those dollars are allowed to be spent on that support both local school districts and institutions of of higher education. Decisions about where that eighty-nine million dollars will go in those three buckets are still being made in the Governor's office and we've been in consultation with them around some of our supports with both the ESR fund, the broader pot, and the Educational Equity Fund. Dr. Rice has been clear that we want to make sure that we spend the available resources we have as a, you know, in collaboration and make sure we can kind of get the biggest bang for our buck, especially in closing the digital divide. The Education Stabilization Fund, the Rethink K-12 Education Models or REM Grant is a competitive grant to states with an available pot of one hundred and eighty million dollars. Letters of intent for this pot of money were due on Tuesday and and we submitted our our intent and the full grant application is due at the end of June. The purpose of these dollars is to identify opportunities and support opportunities for innovative learning for students who've been impacted by COVID nineteen. And we've identified connectivity as a foundation to ensuring that continuity of learning continues now and as we look into the fall of next school year. So we will be working hard over the next three or four weeks to develop an application that will provide resources to support those needs. And then finally, the fifth bucket, philanthropy. We've had ongoing discussions with the philanthropic community. As as Dr. Kiesler mentioned earlier, again, this is a big problem, a broad problem that has big and broad numbers associated with addressing it. And so no one, no one single source is going to solve this problem in terms of having the the resources to invest in computers and connectivity. An example that we the Board has talked about before in previous meetings of philanthropic support in this area is the Connected Futures Program, which was a coalition of philanthropic and business organizations in Detroit that that's the that came together to invest twenty-three million dollars to bridge the digital divide for Detroit Public Schools Community District students. This is the type of partnership and and engagement that we will need from the philanthropic community to meet pockets of need throughout our state to to bridge that digital divide. And we are in continued conversations and partnerships with philanthropic organizations about the needs of Michigan students and communities to address the digital divide and ensure that linear distance can can happen. And with that, we will turn it over to Dr. Rice and happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Garant and Dr. Kiesler. Board members, questions or comments? I noticed that we have a a comment from our Governor's Representative on the Board, Brandy Johnson, Ms. Johnson.
Thanks, Superintendent Rice. I just wanted to give an update to to Kyle's presentation that late yesterday, our GEAR application was approved.
Okay, thank you very much. That is late breaking news.
Yeah, first, you are officially the first person I've told.
There you go. Thank you very much. We appreciate that and I look forward to working with you on that. Thank you. Other questions or comments? We have Ms. Snyder, then Dr. Pritchett and Dr. Pew in that order.
Thank you, Kyle. As you were talking about connectivity, I was just like you were kind of in and out. I live in a sort of rural area. Some difficulty with that, too, but.
Sure.
One question I had was about data from Vanessa's portion. Just wondering if those surveys in that third bucket of of data, the, I'm assuming those are the most up-to-date and accurate. So I'm wondering, did we have any difficulty with people responding to the survey? Do did we have any areas that because of those issues that they didn't, there wasn't as much of a response? And so we had some estimation in that.
Yep, they were able, METL was able to get almost ninety percent of the students represented. Like, we got, we got close, but we did not get to one hundred percent. And I imagine that's a mix of districts just struggling to get the survey out or get the data back in. And then I know districts used a variety of methods to administer the survey, so they didn't all give out their survey online. They gave it out, you know, they did robo-calls and things like that. But yes, certainly access hindered a hundred percent response. I mean, the the percentages might move up a little bit, but roughly around seventy percent is the continued story for Michigan. So we know that leaves us thirty percent who we need to really work on, roughly thirty, you know, maybe twenty-eight or maybe thirty-two. But we're not far off, we think, based on the triangulation of data.
Okay, and one more question about one of the five buckets of funding. The CARES Act is different than the ESR funds. The ESR funds is the three hundred and fifty million dollars. What, you know, and just run by me again, there's a certain percentage of the CARES Act that can be spent on the digital divide?
So, yeah, it's a it's a little confusing. So the 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 ESR funds and the Educational Equity Fund and the GEAR dollars, they're they're all authorized under the CARES Act. So the CARES Act is the broader appropriation bill that includes money not for just for education, but for transportation and other sectors as a response to COVID nineteen. So for the the ESR fund, specifically, the the big bucket that's being allocated to schools, the the law required that ninety percent of those dollars be allocated via the Title I formula to school districts, eligible school districts, excuse me. And so that left. I was, so that leaves the the ten percent of that, those funds, so approximately thirty-eight million dollars for our state that was allowed to be used by the SEA to be spent essentially in the highest need areas as states define. Other states, you know, might not be using those resources or that ten percent on a digital divide, you know, connectivity needs. They might be spending in other areas, but the law allowed, excuse me, states and SEAs to make that decision.
Okay. Do we have a sense that these five buckets will essentially bridge that thirty percent gap?
You know, I think right now, given the size of the need, that, you know, more investment will be will be needed ultimately, especially when you look at the infrastructure portion of, you know, broadband and other just physical plant needs that some areas of our state need to, in order to run broadband or DSL or other forms of Internet to remote parts of our state. You know, I think that's an area where there isn't a necessarily defined bucket at this point that is needed, again, especially in lower northern Michigan and the UP. But Dr. Kiesler, I have some thoughts about that as well.
No, I agree. I mean, I think I think the devices, assuming the supply chain is strong, we probably have a good chance of of working on the device aspect of it with these buckets of money. But the connectivity issue is more entrenched and there's not only building the infrastructure, whatever that is, but then maintaining the funds to keep people connected to it. And I think that's the other part that's unknown. But I think these five buckets will make a good, a really big dent in it. And I think we can, we can make some good progress. But keeping an eye on, even as we do these investments, who's still not being served will be really important.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. Dr. Pritchett, Dr. Pew, and Ms. Fecto.
Thank you. Just a quick question, and maybe I missed it. The ESR Reserve Fund, that ten percent, when do you estimate that 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 grant guidelines will be out for districts to go ahead and start writing their proposals?
Yes, that's a that's a good question, Dr. Pritchett. We continue to have internal conversations. We've had three in the last week on this to start building the application and building the grant criteria out for that. We have kind of maintained the a focus of, as the larger ESR pot has become available, you know, districts are focusing or we want districts to focus on how they're going to use that bigger pot of money because everybody is using or will have, you know, there's a broader eligibility for those dollars to districts. Given the amount of money, the approximately thirty-eight million dollars, you know, that that pool of districts who are going to have access to those dollars is going to be a lot smaller than the broader three hundred and fifty million dollars. But we anticipate being able to develop criteria and put out the application for districts to start applying for those dollars competitively in the next three to four weeks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Dr. Pew, Ms. Fecto.
Just a couple of questions. And my, and I was going to ask about the the Governor's portion, and that's great news, Brandy, that we just missed the funding. Do, and you touched upon that a little bit, Kyle. Brandy, I don't know if we know what the direction of that funding is, what we're looking at doing with that, the eighty, that's eighty-nine million. And then also, the, Kyle, you mentioned the one hundred and eighty million for states. So that's for all states, so Michigan would get a portion of that, correct? And and I'll just get all the, I'll try and get all the questions in. And then you, I can't remember how many, I don't have the presentation in front of me, but how many?
It's ten o'clock.
Sorry. How many districts you said apply for the ESSR dollars? And you've probably mentioned this previously. How many are eligible? And if you can mention how many have applied so far. So I'll stop there.
On the GEAR dollars, I'll just say we have not yet solidified a framework for how we will utilize those dollars. The only thing I'll say is that with the GEAR funds, the allowable uses are beyond just K-12 to include higher education as well. And so just wanted to flag that, that that will probably be a part of our consideration, that some portion of it be utilized to support Michigan's higher ed institutions in addition to K-12. So those discussions are ongoing with the Budget Office and with the executive team and the Governor, but no decisions have been made on how those dollars will be utilized.
And then Pam, I'll take your second question, or Dr. Pew, I'm sorry, I'll take your second question about the 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 REM grant, the ESF REM, which is a terrible acronym. In a world of terrible acronyms, we just picked like, we didn't, the federal government did, but it's possibly the worst. You're absolutely right, that's one hundred and eighty million that's available to states, but it's a competitive grant. So we need to work hard to write a really excellent application and bring those dollars home to Michigan.
And when you say that, so the one hundred and eighty million dollars, do we know how many states will be funded out of that? Or how will that, how how's that looking? What's the maximum amount that we can get?
Kyle, I don't know that we know that exactly yet. Do you?
No, we, I don't think we know that at this point.
Okay.
That was, and the instructions and guidance, oh, sorry, go to Dr. Rice.
No, I was just going to say, there's been, there's been guidance that's indicated that the grants for individual states, and this is an SEA grant, only state education agencies may apply for it, but that the grants are in the order of twelve to fifteen million dollars.
Yeah.
And so, and so you do the math of it, it's going to be pretty substantially competitive. You're talking about-ish twelve awards nationally.
And Dr. Pew, to your last question, there are, I actually just got a text from Louie. Have two additional submitted applications since I spoke ten minutes ago. So we have fifty applications that have been submitted total from districts for the ESR fund dollars for that, the larger ninety percent pot. And there's eight hundred and sixteen total districts who were eligible and and received allocations, again, based on their share of Title I for the current year.
Just one last question I'll sneak in here around the infrastructure portion of our digital divide. We, there is a task force that was formed that's working on this long term, correct? And then one other question, I know that we talked about this in our previous meeting, but in our previous meeting, but we, we talk about connectivity. We talk about access to equipment. But then there's also access to adults that can help and the children as they, they try to maneuver their way through utilizing that equipment and connecting prayerfully to some sort of internet service. And I, I know we're not necessarily able to grasp that, but we know that there's a whole nother set of children whose parents may be at work, parents may be, you know, they may not have, have adults that are there and accessible to them to help them as a, as a teacher would.
Kyle, do you want to reflect on that?
I was just gonna, I was see if, I, I'm not aware of the, the task force related question. Vanessa, do you know?
I'm sorry, Dr. Pew, there was a garbage truck issue that stole my attention for a minute. Can you repeat that, the task force part of the question? I really apologize.
Oh, the infrastructure, I remember you all stating, someone stating that there was an infrastructure task force. And I was, I don't know if it was infrastructure. Maybe it was a digital divide task force. But I was hoping that there, there is some sort of task force that could be formed. And I could think of many people who would be a part of that or entities. And just wondering if that's existing, or maybe I made that up in my head.
Nope. So early on in all of this, we were working closely with the governor's office on, I don't, task force might be a little bit too strong of a term for the working group collaborating around devices. And we, um, we still are, but there's, I think much of that work has been folded into these different grants, the, the work that's going forward. We kind of have a roadmap now. So I don't know that we have a specific task force as much as just continuing to collaborate and talk across agencies to make sure we use these dollars in the smartest possible way.
Okay, just wondering if that, you know, I know I've, I've had questions on this and I, I thought that it was moving in that direction because I would see even, you know, some of the providers that, that hopefully would want to be a part of, of these discussions if they're not ready. So it's not piecemeal, then it's the long-term that we're looking at. Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you, Dr. Pew. Ms. Vecto?
Yeah, hi. I just have a couple of questions. Do we have an estimate of what the, the amount of money that we actually need and the gap that we have? Or are we, how close are we to meeting that estimated budget? That's one question. And the other is, is there money being considered for IT support work when the things break? You know, it's one thing I've learned with all these kids is that devices break. And then how do they get replaced? And is there some plan to ensure that, that there is support around that? Thank you.
Well, I'll, I'll address the first part of your question, Ms. Vecto, that the, you know, the, the ultimate dollar amount that, you know, we, to, to bridge this divide, I don't think is, is known at this point. You know, there are broad estimates that, you know, groups in the technology field may have put together or, um, you know, there's, there's estimates out there, but I don't think we have a good handle on what the dollar amount is needed. And to your point about you kind of device management and, and replacement and subscriptions for connectivity and all that stuff, I think it's, um, you know, there's a, we need to have a better understanding of the ongoing cost that even once we have, you know, the device issue addressed and maybe even the connectivity issue addressed, what's the ongoing cost to ensure that, you know, learning is happening both for device replacement and what the ongoing cost will be to keep kids and families connected to the internet going forward?
I, I do have another question. Are we working with like providers of, that would, you know, provide better cell service? Or are they involved in these discussions to try to hit those areas that don't have very good connectivity or internet?
So I think, yep. So on the, um, in the education space, as far as who MDE is working with currently, we have a fairly large network of partners, people like Connect Michigan, which is a, that works in partnership with the Michigan Public Service Commission. We work very closely with MAISA and then the REMC's, the Regional Education and Media Centers. That's a lot of our technological infrastructure. Through the TRIG grant that you all, somebody remember the TRIG grant, the years of the TRIG grant, we had different relationships with providers. We have relationships with like the Merit Network and the, um, the State Education Network. I think though, that working more directly with companies and providers is something we will need to do in this time. That, you know, the MDE is not necessarily the best positioned traditionally to work with the, you know, providers around business, although this space, the ed tech work in the MDE is the one that does it the most. But I think that can be an area of growth and partnership with, a better partnership as we go forward into this time. And particularly to address connectivity, we will have to because the solutions can't all come without those kinds of partnerships. But I would say we have like, you know, some, but we could, we need to do more and we need help doing more.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vecto. Mr. McMillan and then Ms. Snyder.
Yeah, just quickly regarding devices going to students, is there, are there good filters that, you know, you can't get, that the kids can't get around them? Hate to be giving out devices and then them being used for inappropriate things.
So that's a great question. In general, when, when schools issue devices normally, they put them on the school system and behind the firewall and install the filters and, you know, the monitoring software and whatnot. We do know that some of what happened now during the pandemic, when devices were bought quickly and sent home or whatnot, not, or kids are learning on their at-home devices that parents bought, not all of those are on the school network. And that is something we need to, as we, these investments, that's why we would really hope to run them through some of our structures so that they can be bought by the schools and then loaded up with their learning management software, their security software, all of the things that they need. So this minute, there's too many kids on devices that have no relationship to the school. They're just a device. In the long run, I think we can, we had remedied, that was not a problem before. It just was the speed that people had to send, you know, the speed that we had to make this transition. So if it's a school issued device, it's pretty safe. But if it's not, it's as safe as the, you know, the home or the parents make it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much, Mr. McMillan. Ms. Snyder?
I would echo that concern. So definitely looking forward to that conversation evolving because I think that is a big part of connecting kids to education digitally. I was just curious, and this could be, Michael, in your next year portion of the agenda, just wondering if there's already conversation going on in how to use digital devices and integrate back into the classroom to some degree? I know right now, we're, we're just, I know it's a big enough thing to bite and chew to, to gap the digital divide, but is there any preliminary conversation going on regarding how we're going to sort of bridge back, if you will, next year?
When you say bridge back, what do you mean?
Kind of get back to teaching, if you will, having people in, in person and in class.
Sure, that, that will be a topic of conversation for the next presentation.
Okay.
You bet. Yep. Other questions or comments from board members? Questions or comments from board members? If I could just share a few additional reflections that might be helpful. Each of these surveys that we do on the digital divide is time limited. Currently, districts across the state are purchasing significant numbers of devices for their children. And so the percentage of children with devices is rising during this pandemic. It's a small silver lining and an otherwise a pretty dark cloud. So we're going to need to resurvey about, at a minimum, about devices at the end of the summer to see how well we've done to fill that gap between those who have and those who don't. Connectivity, as Dr. Kiesler mentioned, is a little bit more challenging, is substantially more challenging. It's more expensive, number one. It is something that, though temporarily in certain cases can be addressed by local school districts, on a more enduring basis cannot be addressed by local school districts, requires broadband. And particularly in rural jurisdictions with this economies of scale for private industry is a challenge for us. Mr. Garant noted the issue of dollars. We believe in the department that each of these funding sources that we identify will be helpful to chip away at the digital divide, the digital divide relative to devices, the digital divide relative to connectivity. And that's what we think we need to do. Chip away at the need, chip away at the need, chip of the way at the need, piece by piece by piece, partnering with the governor's office, partnering with our local school districts, partnering with the RESEs, partnering with our associations, philanthropy and the like, to eventually eliminate the gap and provide fully for the need. After all, these computers are now extensions of our public schools and we need to make sure to bare minimum that young people have devices and more helpfully, devices that are internet connected as well. So a number of people would look at this challenge and say that it's insuperable. We look at it and say, how are we going to chip away at it? Piece by piece by piece, little by little by little. We were very encouraged by the announcement of philanthropy about the work that's being done with DPSCD to address digital divide in Detroit. We were also cheered by the USDA announcement to work on connectivity in three rural southwest Michigan counties, Alleghan, Van Buren and Berry. So while these certainly are not actions that fully address the issue, there is going to be no single action that fully addresses the digital divide. We're going to have to work on this piece by piece, little by little, funding source by funding source, partnership by partnership, until we finally eliminate the divide and until every child is able not only to have a device, but better still, to be internet connected with that device for asynchronous and synchronous communications with school. Just a note on funding sources, if I could. Each of these funding sources has multiple tugs on them. So Brandy Johnson, our governor's representative on the board, noted that the Gears dollars have multiple possible uses. I might add, so too does the, the ESER fund, the 90% that is formula distributed, which more than 800 districts across the state will receive their formula share of the allocation. There are 12 potential uses. Addressing the digital divide is but one of those 12 uses. That's the $350 million bucket, if you will. And important to note is that this is a source of funding that's going to be even more important, given the pandemic, given the concerns about the revenue bases of local school districts in the midst of the pandemic. The 10%, the Educational Equity Fund, also a part of ESER, that has multiple tugs on it conceivably as well, though we have designated connectivity as our most important goal for that, for that 10%. Philanthropy, obviously, in general, has a lot of requests for its funding, and particularly in the midst of a pandemic. And this REM grant, to which Dr. Kiesler and Mr. Garant referred earlier, that's going to have a lot of competition across the country. So each of these dollars, each of these funds, while they seem substantial, have a lot of tugs, have a lot of different, uh, good projects that are going to rise to make their case, if you will, for funding. I'm going to ask one more time, board members, any more questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Garant, Dr. Kiesler, thank you very much for your presentation. Our second presentation, to which Ms. Snyder alluded, is a presentation on next year. And Mr. Ackley is going to put that presentation on the screen. And this, um, this presentation short is going to just inform not just board, but community a little bit more about the vehicles that are going to be working on the decision or decisions to return to school. So our agenda for this presentation, the COVID-19 Task Force on Education of the Governor, the Return to Learn Advisory Council, MDE work groups, and then a discussion thereof. On March 3rd, the governor established COVID-19 Task Force on Education, which includes different state government agencies, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, the Michigan Department of Education and others. One week later, as we were having our state board meeting, board, the first two positive cases of COVID-19 were identified in Michigan. Two days later, the governor would close schools for three weeks, effective close of business, the following day. On April 2nd, she closed schools for the remainder of the year for in-person instruction. I appreciate the governor's leadership at this time of pandemic. She's been absolutely stand-up. Task Force is now charged by the governor with recommending a roadmap and framework for schools on when to open and under what conditions, taking into account various public health scenarios. This is first and foremost, a public health issue and secondarily, a public education issue. In the midst of a pandemic, public health concerns are primary. Task Force will be informed by a reading to Learn Advisory Council that the governor announced on Friday, including voices from educators, health experts and many other community stakeholders. The Advisory Council will gather critical stakeholder feedback on the content for the roadmap. Last Friday, the governor created this Right Return to Learn Advisory Council. She is currently accepting applications through the end of today. Council will comprise 20 to 25 individuals, students, parents, teachers, administrators and public health officials who will share suggestions with the task force, task force recommendations to the governor. Advisory Council will share ideas about how to safely, equitably and efficiently return to school in the fall. Concurrent with and complementary to the work of the task force and the Advisory Council, MDE has established work groups, urban, rural and suburban, to help gather input regarding the variety of education needs across Michigan's various school settings in the midst of this pandemic. These work groups will provide ideas to me and by extension through to the task force on which I serve and more broadly to MDE on how schools should prepare and implement student instruction for next year. School districts will need to make hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of micro and granular School districts will need to make hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of micro and granular decisions to run the day-to-day school year. And so, within the broad parameters of what is permissible, what is safe, as we return to school, our schools will need to make many, many, many decisions about how to operate. The work groups will help enormously in the decision-making over the next 15 months. Leading these work groups, we have co-chairs. The urban work group will be co-led by my Chief of Staff, Dr. Sue Cornell, Dearborn Public Schools Superintendent, Dr. Glenn Maleko. The rural work group will be led by MDE Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Scott Kennick-Schnett, and Michigan Association of Superintendents and Administrators Executive Director, Mr. Chris Weigent. And the suburban work group will be led by MDE Chief Deputy Superintendent, Ms. Sheila Alice, and Oakland School Superintendent, Dr. Wanda Cook-Robinson. We are actively working to get the broadest amount of input that we can, the best input that we can, as we work through this pandemic, the challenges associated therewith. And with that, I open it up for, for board discussion. Any questions or comments? And that is a pre-pandemic picture of, of me in Benton Harbor. And I look forward to getting back to some of those moments in the future. President Albridge.
So, I'm glad, glad to see that Task Force are being created to look at how we can safely return to school in the fall. I am curious, since, you know, the, the clock is ticking and there's still so many unknowns, have you established any timelines to go along with these panels yet, or is that part of their charge?
It is part of their charge. The reality is, is that the public health considerations are going to drive the public education decisions. And we're certainly not going to be back in school if the Governor and her health advisors don't believe that it's safe to return to school. I anticipate that we will be back in school in September, but under very, very different conditions than we've been in the past. Moreover, I anticipate that it will be a very staccato year, a, a much less smooth year than we typically plan for and expect in our public schools, not simply in Michigan, but across the country, across the, across the world. I think this is our new normal, for the time being, until we develop a vaccine and are able to return to a fair bit of normalcy. I would hope that recommendations would be out in, to the Governor, in no later than early July. I think that the schoolspeople need a finite amount of time. Under normal circumstances, there are things that would take place, Dr. Albridge, prior to the end of the school year, that are not going to be able to find, be finalized prior to the end of the school year, for the coming school year, because of the pandemic. Reflect upon the fact that we're 2 and 1/3 months from the first COVID-19 cases in the state of, of Michigan, and in just a little bit more than two months, we've had a large number of COVID-19 cases here, huge number across the country and across the world. And so, so much can change in 2 and 1/3 months. We're a little bit shy of four months from the beginning of the school year, so imagine how much can change during that period of time. So, on the one hand, these decisions will come later than would typically be the case for educators. On the other hand, from a public health perspective, and these, this is a public health moment, first and foremost, from a public health perspective, to make decisions in July would be to make tentative decisions pending the evolution of the pandemic. Follow-up? Okay, all right, very good. Ms. Ramos-Montini.
Good morning, everyone. I have been doing, and I have been informed how we are conducting the department as far as technology, connectivity and keeping our eye on the two major things that we are supposed to be engaged with in this healthcare and educational, I'm going to call you repair, but for a better word, and, and I like what President, I mean Superintendent said, that we're chipping away at the need, piece by piece, and this is very evident in this meeting. The Governor has been a fearless leader in, in taking care of the state and being very vigilant as to what education has to do. I, I am very encouraged by the, by the attention that school districts, that ISDs, that RESSAs, that the Michigan Department of Education have been doing, so we can get ready for the next school year. And, and so, Superintendent Rice, you mentioned a little while ago, the work groups that have been assigned to help with the, I'm going to say, the creative way that we're going to follow and, and continue educating our students. And you talked about the work groups, but I didn't see any appointments of anybody on this side of the state in any of those work groups. And so, how were they selected and, and why is it that nobody from this side of the state is part of that group?
Well, first of all, there are 90 members on the work group, and I didn't name the 90 members. I simply named the co-chairs. Three of those co-chairs are department leaders that I named. Three of them are, are leaders in the state. One of them is a statewide association leader, so he leads an association that works across the state. The other two are in their, their particular corners. But we have broad representation geographically. We're in every region of the state. We have several people from the UP, we have several people from West Michigan, Region 3, where you live, Region 7, where I live, the Northern Michigan, the area around Saginaw. So, every single solitary region, Ms. Ramos-Montini is represented.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Ms. Fecto, then Ms. Snyder.
Yes. Are you there?
Yes, I just had to unmute.
Okay.
Sorry. I haven't seen the charge, and I'm assuming the charge would include these things, but I just want to bring them up. I'm worried about, concerned about particularly vulnerable populations that are both in the, in the staff and the teachers and the students, that special attention is placed for them and how to accommodate them if they're considered to somehow not be able to come into work, if that's when that happens. Also, given that we're a local control state, are these guidelines, are these, will these intended to be mandated, and how would these, these precautions be managed to ensure everyone is safe? I also have one other question. I can hold until I hear the answer to those.
Please share the first question again with me.
Yeah, I'm assuming that this is in the charge, but I just want to check. I'm, I'm concerned about vulnerable populations, both in the teachers, staff and students, and if there's special attention, that's, I don't want that to be overlooked, and I'm assuming it won't be, but how will those with, you know, people with underlying conditions or that make them particularly vulnerable, when we have a return to work, how will they be accommodated? Will they be laid off if they can't come in? Will they be, or will they, if they don't come to school, how will that be accommodated? Those, those types of things that, so that's my first question. Is that part?
It, it, it will absolutely have to be a consideration of what we do. There are going to be young people with underlying conditions whose parents won't send them to school. There may be parents of children whose parent, that have no underlying conditions, whose parents say nonetheless that they don't want them sent to school. We're going to have some older staff members who feel vulnerable, either because of their medical conditions or in spite of the absence of medical conditions. These will absolutely be considerations as we, as we move forward. There's no question about that. To the issue of guidelines versus mandates, that's ultimately going to be a governor's decision. She is, after all, the chief executive of the state, charged with ensuring public health safety and welfare. I would assume that there will be certain things that will be mandated, but within those mandates, substantial flexibility, once you're following whatever is mandated behavior, that there will be flexibility beyond that. But again, I don't want to necessarily prejudge. It is, after all, just shy of four months away, and we don't know the course of the pandemic. We don't know the course of science relative to our thinking about the pandemic. But I would anticipate that it would not be a whole lot different from some of the structures that we're seeing now, that there are certain things that are mandated, but within the mandates, within the constraints, there is some flexibility associated therewith.
Okay. I had one other question.
Sure.
So, given that things are changing all the time, will these work groups be maintained to make adjustments over time, or will it be over in the beginning of July?
The, the, the work groups, once you have accepted membership, you, you cannot leave. We, we mandate your perpetual participation through, through at least the duration of your employment, if not through the rest of your life. In all seriousness, July has no, July has a value from the perspective of the initial determinations. But beyond that, there are going to be myriad decisions throughout the year. We're seeing this, if you look at the guidance that the department has put out in the last 2 and 1/3 months, several dozen discreet pieces of guidance, guidance that has had to shift with changes in guidance from the federal government, with changes in the pandemic. So, we anticipate that those work groups are going to continue for the indefinite future. I would hope that the need for them will wane as we develop a vaccine and distribute that vaccine and, and so forth. But I would anticipate that the, the work groups will be with us minimally through the 2021 school year.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Ms. Snyder?
Yes, I have a quick question for the, our work groups. Are there any students or kids on the work groups?
There are, at this point, there are not students on the work groups. There may, we may put some students on the work groups. It's a, it's a good question. We have done a little bit of reflecting upon that. The question becomes, how do we get that good student voice in without having it being subordinated in a group of 30 adults, all of whom are pretty high-powered? We've got Regional Teachers of the Year, we've got strong principals, we've got a number of superintendents, we've got agency heads. And so, it is conceivable that the student voice that we seek and that we, that we obtain will be gotten as a subset of those work groups. So, for example, that we might get some rural student feedback, some urban student feedback, some suburban student feedback from the work groups, but not necessarily during the work group time. So, subgroup might go out and meet with, virtually, but meet with those groups. That voice is important, and I appreciate you mentioning it.
Well, so, it would be great for the state board to have, I think, to have access, direct access to that voice.
Yes.
You know, I just think there's some exceptional wisdom in, in what they're going through directly right now and what they would say about, okay, what it's been like to learn at home, what the differences between learning at home and learning in school. So, I would really, I mean, I would really like to hear directly from students, from all walks of life. So, I don't know if you can send out a survey on some level, like we've, like we've done, as opposed to, you know, getting it filtered some other way, just something really direct from them.
Right. Yeah, I would actually, I mean, there are a number of ways that we can collect data. I would like to actually hear from the students. The conversations that I've had with kids during this time have been very rich, and while survey data is helpful, the voices and the ability to pulse within conversations, I think is even more helpful. So, you know, one methodology doesn't, doesn't preclude another, but the, the actual physical voice, hearing tone, it's hard to hear tone in a survey. It's easier to, to hear it in conversation and in a back, back and forth. Yeah, okay, thank you. We have Dr. Pritchett and Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. First of all, I would strongly second the inclusion of student voice at this point as these work groups are working and Task Force are taking in consideration. I've had the unique experience of being able to assist with my granddaughters through this remote learning, and they do have some insight. Some of it may be just personal to them, but I think overall, they've got some interesting insight. I'll give you an example. This morning, on the cover of the Wall Street Journal, they had a picture of a cafeteria somewhere in Korea, and they were showing how they had put partitions up at the cafeteria tables to keep students apart, of course, and they appear to be either plywood or cardboard, and the first comment was, well, I hope they would use Plexiglas so we can at least see across the table. Again, coming from the voice of a student who is, you know, has been sitting at a cafeteria table, so I just throw that out, that I, I strongly recommend that somehow we listen to the students also. My, my comment is, and I know Dr. Rice is doing this, he's having conversations with regional superintendent meetings, and I appreciate that, and I know that it takes an enormous amount of time, but the word that comes to my mind in all of this is being nimble and flexible, because I think while we may start school in September, person to person, we have to keep in mind and keep reiterating to our school community and to our parents that that probably will not be the way it goes for the entire year. And so, school districts, I think, need to have several scenarios available. I appreciate the work of Task Force and these work groups as they begin to at least help districts begin to begin to grapple with, okay, what would we do if over the weekend, we are told that we're going to have to go back into remote learning at a particular point fairly quickly? So again, I, lots of work before you, but I just wanted to bring that up. As school districts, we've been doing this for a lot of years, opening school, and I don't want anyone to lose sight of the fact that that will probably be changing fairly rapidly throughout the entire year. Thank you.
It's a good point. When we've done our regional meetings with regional superintendents, and we've done a few rounds of these during the pandemic, we have urged the need in planning for next year to stay nimble, to stay flexible, to stay fluid. You're planning for multiple realities. It's not easy. It's not desirable. It's certainly not what we ought to be about as a rule. But this is a pandemic, and health concerns are going to take precedence over educational concerns, to your point. So we're going to have to be prepared, not only to educate children face to face, but also at a distance. And it may be that we do some of, of each of those in very tight time constraints. And so that nimbleness, that fluidness, needs to be both from a temper, from a temporal perspective, from a time perspective, as well as a place perspective as well. It's going to be a very challenging year, to your point. Thank you very much. And Ms. Johnson, would you like to tell us about the advisory council's composition?
Sure. Well, just to respond to Ms. Snyder's question, there will be a student on the advisory council, and that's specified in the executive order. And then in terms of Ms. Pritchett's comment, we, that is the, that is the ultimate outcome of the, the task force with feedback from the advisory council is ultimately a roadmap that provides some guiding principles and a framework for how we will approach largely school operations from now until a vaccine is found under various scenarios reflecting the health data on the ground in that particular community. So the task force, which Dr. Rice sits on, that's the group that was formed as part of the State Emergency Operations Center on March 3rd. That group is ultimately going to be tasked with recommending a final roadmap. It's sort of the overarching document with, with a framework, with the various scenarios. And then, as Dr. Rice described, the essential or mandated actions that districts will need to take, supplemented with guidance and best practices. And that's where maybe some of the flexibility would come in. The task force will be advised by the advisory council, which is exclusively composed of external stakeholders, so not internal to state government. We'll try to achieve a balance of the advisory council between three groups. Obviously, education stakeholders and voices, including administrators, educators, support staff, and school board members. The second, third would be public health and safety experts. So an epidemiologist, a pediatrician, a county health department director, a local emergency manager. And then the last third is really the community voice, and that will be a parent, a student, a, you know, potentially someone from a youth-serving nonprofit organization, a civic or faith-based organization, a tribal representative, et cetera. So that's the balance that we hope to achieve. The application for sitting on the advisory council is going to, we ask the applications be submitted by the end of the day today. And according to Gita Dagger, our appointments director, we have set a new record for number of applications ever received for any board or commission. And we are already this morning at over 1,200 applications received to sit on this advisory council, which is pretty mind-blowing. So we hope to have that advisory council named within about a week from today and to get the, to get this going. One thing that I don't know if Dr. Rice mentioned is that we're also partnering with a nonprofit organization called Opportunity Labs to facilitate both the task force and the advisory council in developing this roadmap. They'll both be facilitating and providing technical expertise. It's a team of three individuals that we'll, we will be working with. But two of them, Andrew Bure and Mario Ramirez, will provide a lot of the content expertise. Andrew Bureau, Bureur, was the chief operating officer for New York City Public Schools for a time, including when Hurricane Sandy hit New York. And so has this experience of helping, you know, a large district help cope with school operations during an unplanned emergency. And then Dr. Mario Ramirez is a medical doctor whose background is in infectious disease and pandemic response and has worked significantly on other pandemic response efforts, both domestically and internationally, and will provide that public health expertise. Like Dr. Rice mentioned, the, the public health and safety protocols will be the major focus of both the task force and the advisory council in developing this roadmap so that, that students and, and teachers and staff can safely and equitably return to school. And I'll also note that we are partnering with the philanthropic community to engage Opportunity Labs. No state or federal dollars are being used for that.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Dr. Pugh, a comment?
Yes, thank you for that, Brandy and, and Dr. Rice, the presentation and the information. And I'm just really happy and relieved to hear that public health is, is going to remain at the forefront of any decisions. Obviously, we are facing economic crisis as well as a public health crisis. But we know we have to get the public health part right. This is not about making sure that children have babysitters or someplace to go while the economy is reopened, but it has to be about the people. And when we get the health, the social, emotional, physical health of our children, of their parents, of the caregivers right, then we can hopefully lend to securing the health of our economy as well. So I just appreciate you all putting and keeping the public health of our children and, and the people, the residents of Michigan, at the forefront. And just glad to hear that the Michigan Department of Education and educators will be, educators throughout the state will be intricately, intricately involved in this. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Board members, any other comments or questions? Comments or questions? It's going to be a very dynamic area. There are going to be a lot of people providing feedback and legitimate feedback. We've got 1.5 million public school children. We've got parents and educators. There are a lot of ties to public education, a lot of interest in public education. And even in the midst of a pandemic, we have to figure out how best educate our children, notwithstanding the fact that how best educate our children will be certainly different, as Dr. Pritchett points out, than it was pre-pandemic and one hopes post-pandemic as well. One final call for questions or comments. Mr. McMillan, a question?
Okay, there we go. I guess if we're, okay, so right now, you're just talking strictly about next year, given in light of the pandemic. And so I guess going off of your, I heard your other comment was that there are going to be some parents that don't want their children to go to school, potentially. What, you know, will those kids, I mean, will, will it, will they just be given an exemption? You know, I mean, I guess just treated as any homeschool child is? Or alternative schooling that they might use, distance learning or whatever is? But, but assuming it's, they don't, they don't apply for an online charter or something, will it be just, they'll be assumed to be homeschooling?
I think those are questions that have to be resolved with governor, with state legislature. I think those are bigger questions than are going to be resolved solely within the department. It is a unique period of time, and we have to treat it as a unique period of time and figure out what works best, not simply for public health, but for public education of our 1.5 million public school kids. So it's a challenging area. It's a, it's sort of uncharted waters, I would say. Follow-up?
No.
Okay, all right, very good. Last call, last, last call. Okay, very good. Thank you very much, board. Board, it is 10:55, and what I would like us to do is to pivot to our third and final presentation, if we could. This is a presentation on the Strategic Education Plan. You know that we were working on our revised Strategic Education Plan on a monthly basis, pre-pandemic. There has been some conversation with you briefly about the importance, not only of addressing the immediate needs under this pandemic, but beyond that, the more enduring educational needs and looking at where we need to go with the revised Strategic Education Plan. So Sheila Alice, our chief deputy superintendent, Ms. Kelly Siciliano Carter, our director of strategic planning and implementation, are going to reconnect us back to our pre-pandemic work on Strategic Education Plan update. And then we'll engage in a conversation about next steps associated with that work. Ladies, good morning. Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Good morning, everyone. Ms. Carter and I are very appreciative of the opportunity to revisit the topic of Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan with you this morning. Today's agenda includes the following: A review of the present situation and an acknowledgement of the significant impact of COVID-19 on Michigan's education system. Then we'll move into a review of the process and timeline to revise the current Top 10 and 10 plan. We'll provide an overview of the components of the current Top 10 plan. And then we're going to wrap up with recommendations for updating the various components of the plan, such as its mission, vision, goals, and metrics. So first, I'd like to begin by setting the context of our current situation. As you heard Dr. Rice mention this morning, Michigan had its two, first two cases of COVID-19 on March 10th. That was the same day as the March State Board of Education meeting. Two days later, on March 12th, the governor announced the temporary closure of schools and the following day issued EO 2020-5, temporarily, temporarily closing schools, as Dr. Rice also mentioned this morning. The closure of schools shifted educators from providing in-person instruction to learning at a distance. Districts created and began implementing their continuity of learning plans in April to provide student learning through the end of their school year. And as you heard Dr. Rice mention this morning also, throughout the extended time of school closure and during learning at a distance, the Michigan Department of Education has issued, and we continue to issue critically important guidance and resources to support staff in our schools and districts during this pandemic. We want to recognize our current situation before we examine the actions that we've taken this year to review and revise the Top 10 and 10 plan and to reengage the board in conversation about Michigan's Strategic Education Plan. On this slide, we've listed the actions we've accomplished relative to the Top 10 review process. This is a brief overview of what we've presented to the board in the past. Today, we wanted to revisit it to refresh our background knowledge. So from November to January, we held nearly 50 interviews with internal and external stakeholders. We presented the results of those interviews to the board during your January meeting. Then in early January, we launched an online survey that closed the beginning of February. We had almost 12,000 responses to the survey. And during the February State Board of Ed meeting, we provided a brief summary of the results. In early February, sorry, in the rest of February and in early March, we engaged in a more thorough analysis of the results, and we shared that analysis with you during the March 10th State Board of Ed meeting. During that meeting, we had a really good discussion on the survey results and potential goals. And that was the last presentation we made to you on the Top 10 and 10 review process due to the urgency of the COVID-19 pandemic, which shifted our focus and shifted our attention to this current crisis. So due to the interruption in our presentations and discussions with you on Michigan's Top 10 and 10 plan, we're leaving open the timeframe that we will bring a recommendation to you for a revised plan. On this next slide, this is, again, intended to revisit previously presented information on the expected outcomes of the Top 10 plan. The revised plan will be streamlined, clear and concise, and have current and relevant language. We want there to be an improved understanding of the plan and an extended support for it. The plan should be both directional and aspirational, and it's important that the plan is focused on goals and metrics. As a reminder, Michigan's current Top 10 and 10 plan includes a vision statement, a mission statement, four guiding principles, seven goals, and 44 strategies that are embedded in those goals and help to achieve them. But the current plan does not include any metrics. After receiving and reviewing stakeholder input, we are recommending the following to you. The current mission and vision statements remain the same. The guiding principles are updated. The goals are revised. And metrics are identified for each goal to indicate progress in achieving those goals. So the mission statement in the current Top 10 and 10 plan is this: Support, Learning, and Learners. We recommend that we do not change it. And the vision statement in the current Top 10 and 10 plan is: Every learner in Michigan's public schools will have an inspiring, engaging, and caring learning environment that fosters creative and critical thinkers who believe in their ability to positively influence Michigan and the world beyond. We recommend that the current vision statement also remain unchanged. On this slide, we've listed eight goals that emerged during the interview with stakeholders or were ranked as very important based on the survey results that we shared with you earlier this year. Dr. Rice has discussed many of these goals with you during previous State Board of Education meetings this year. So as we think about identifying goals for the revised plan, I think it's important that the goals selected are those that are, are enduring and sustainable, regardless of the circumstances and the environment. and sustainable regardless of the circumstances and the environment, that they have relevance and meaning and exist beyond the pandemic, that they're both directional and aspirational. Because the goals selected are those goals that should guide and influence decisions regarding our public education system, not just currently, but in years to come. We continue to emphasize that metrics are critically important to the Top 10 Plan. This is a noticeably missing component in the current plan. And we believe it's essential in the revised plan. Metrics are commonly used to track and compare performances over time. They help us monitor progress towards achieving each of the goals. And once the goals are identified, we would recommend that at least one, if not multiple, metrics or data points are selected for each goal. And then at some point, we may want to consider having a deep conversation on metrics where we engage in a pre-pandemic and a post-pandemic analysis of some of the data sets, knowing that our education system looked different from the pandemic than it looks during and will look post-pandemic. It is likely we'll see interrupted trend lines due to the pandemic. And we may need to compare those two sets of trend lines, those prior to the pandemic and those post-pandemic, to determine if the effects of the pandemic had on both performance and progress. So we thank you for the opportunity to provide a status report on the Top 10 and 10 Process, on the review process to revise our plan, sharing with you what we've accomplished and some of the recommendations for the revised plan. And so now, Dr. Rice, I will turn the presentation back to you for discussion with the Board. Once again, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alice, Ms. Carter. Board members, any, any broad reflections before we move into a more specific conversation about goals? So broad reflections and then, and then a more targeted conversation around goals? It's that, it's that pause in the classroom, letting people get the opportunity to weigh in. Okay. Hearing, hearing and/or seeing none, if we could please put up on the, on the screen, the goals that the Board has, Board has discussed most substantially. Thank you. Remember, Board, that these were not simply among the goals that you felt were of greatest interest pre-pandemic, but in addition, they were among the goals that our 12,000 survey participants felt were among the most important. They were also among the goals that those several dozen people whom we surveyed in advance of with, with sort of a broader conversation felt were the most important. I'm looking for your reflections as we are two and a third months into COVID-19 pandemic in the state of Michigan. To what extent do you feel these particular goals continue to endure, to continue to reflect your broad interests? And to what extent do you feel that they need to be morphed in some way, shape, or form, given of the last one-fifth of a year? Ms. Vecdo.
Okay, unmuted. I was looking at the address teacher shortage, and it seems a little bit vague. I'm wondering if it should be something like increase the supply of, or, you know, increase the number of certified teachers in areas of shortage, or reduce turnover, or something like that, so that it's a little bit more measurable than just address?
Fair enough. And reflect the fact that each of these goals, and we can, we can certainly wordsmith that, happy to do that. But each of these goals, we would hope, would be accompanied by metrics that would show more specifically what we're reflecting upon. But you'd like to see this be increase the number of teachers in areas of shortage?
Right. Or, and reduce turnover.
Okay.
Yeah, something like, overall, I think the goals are solid. I, that was the only thing about tweaking that one.
Okay. So a work on reducing the gap, closing the shortage, eliminating the shortage, number one, and addressing turnover, number two. Because what we know is, is that across the country, new teachers are less likely to stay for a career. That may be a function of a new generation. It may be a function of a new profession. And so we have to reflect upon this, make the profession as interesting as possible for our young people to, to go into, to seek. And if generationally, there are some differences, well, there are some differences. But minimally, we'll have done what we need to do to, you know, to attract talent to the profession, to educate our young people. So we will, we will make that, or those amendments as we work moving forward into the next, into the next meeting. Hearing no objections from, from other Board members associated therewith. And so we'll be pulsing in this conversation relative to those sorts of, of suggestions as we put together something that reflects the best possible Board consensus. Ms. Snyder, then Dr. Pugh.
Just looking at, okay, I gotta get this bad network quality box out of the way. Improving literacy achievement. I'm wondering, just focusing on that even within the context of the digital divide, is this something that we can have be a subtopic of the task force? And do some crosswork there, if you will? We've had a 90% response in assessing the digital divide. Can we use any of that response to reach kids right now? Just thinking aloud.
Sure. So, so is this a question about the strategic ed plan or a question about our work this summer with kids?
Sort of merging both.
Right. Okay. So with respect to the summer work with children, we have a piece of guidance. Ms. Alice has been leading the creation of that guidance. It's due to go out this week. She and I just reflected upon that guidance together on Monday. It's about a 20-page document. It's about summer learning and the need to address summer learning even more in the midst of a pandemic, given what will be a bumpy last third of the school year. I think that's what you're, what you're referencing, Ms. Snyder. So we do anticipate sharing with our local school districts, and I've already done three regional meetings and mentioned this with each of the regional superintendents. The summer is more important this summer than in past summers because the spring will have been less impactful, all else being equal, than previous springs. So we are working on this issue. Absolutely. It's an important issue. I'm glad you raised it at the, at the meeting. Relative to the Strategic Education Plan, would you recommend a change in the goal? And if so, what would you recommend that that wording be changed to?
You know what? Let me think about that, and we'll come back around, probably circle back around during Board member comment.
Sure, fair enough. Thank you. Dr. Pugh, then Dr. Pritchett.
And I'm sorry, I may have been multitasking here. These goals that you have presented here, Dr. Rice, are those that you said fell off of our radar but were picked up by the surveys?
No, they were, they were goals that the Board has expressed an interest in over a period of several months that were highly noted, substantially highly noted percentage-wise in the 12,000 surveys that took place in, in and around the holidays, so somewhere between December and January. So these represent the thinking in part of our community and in part of our Board. Not one or the other, but really both.
Okay. And, and I remember us having a lot of discussion, I won't pull out any specific ones, but some we were talking about were goals. Others were more like if you turn that, this lever, then that goal would be attained, or it would, it would help us to achieve, dial up or dial down on that, you know, how fast we could get to that goal. Around the teacher shortage piece, we had a lot of conversation about that that lends to what Board Member Vecdo talked about. I remember lengthy discuss, discussion in which Cara, maybe one of the regional teachers, was able to lend to as well. Because though we put that out there, we know that there's a lot of things that would lead to teacher shortage. But just, just some thoughts.
Yes, there's no, there's no question about that. So you, you and I've had a number of conversations about this one-on-one. The Board has had a number of conversations. Recall that we, at one point, were bucketing goals. We talked about input goals. We talked about output goals. We talked about outcome goals. Input goals being goals that preceded output goals that weren't necessarily what children left our public schools or public school districts with in terms of knowledge, skills, and ability, but were necessary on the front end to generate that knowledge, those skills, those abilities. So we did talk about input goals. An example of an input goal would be addressing the teacher shortage, however worded, providing adequate and equitable school funding, however worded, addressing early childhood opportunities and expanding them, again, however worded. We talked about output goals being things like a graduation rate, an increase in the percentage of children working on particular secondary school opportunities, AP, IB, CTE, early middle college dual enrollment. And then we talked about outcome goals. The best example of an outcome goal is the one at the end that you see here, the percentage of adults with a post-secondary credential by a particular year. Outputs are what you leave a given entity with, in this case, public schools. Outcomes are more enduring. They would follow outputs. They are deeper in, in people's lives, but they're enduring. And they are in part a function, not completely, but they are in part a function of what we do with our young people. Because if we give them the knowledge, skills, and abilities in our schools, they're able to go out after they leave us and get the sorts of credentials that they need to be self-sufficient in, in life. So, Dr. Pugh, you are 100% right. We talked about these in a variety of different ways. They are not all the same sorts of goals by any means. They are a series of unlikes. But what I think bind these is our need as a state to address in some form or fashion all of these areas. Because the reality is, is that if we don't pour into our children young, we're not going to get a lot out of them as adults. It was Frederick Douglass who once said, and I paraphrase, that it's easier to teach children than it is to fix broken men. And, or by extension, broken, broken adults. And so the more we do, and the better we do in public education, the more we get on the, on the backend. You have a follow-up, Dr. Pugh, before we pivot to Dr. Pritchett?
No, I think that you elaborated everything that I could say.
Very good. Thank you. Dr. Pritchett, then Mr. McMillan.
Thank you. I'm probably getting into the weeds a little bit on this, but I'm looking at the expanded secondary learning opportunities. And as I was looking at that goal or that statement, it occurred to me flexibility with Michigan Merit Curriculum, which I know prior to March 10, we had begun to have some conversations about. And I appreciate the comments just made by Dr. Pugh and yourself related to the different ways in which these statements can take on, you know, what type of a goal it might be. But I'm also sort of thinking about the pandemic response we need to help schools with as we move forward into next year. So this probably sounds like a pretty disjointed comment, the more I'm listening to it. But I, I know that providing flexibility for Michigan Merit, for example, probably would fall under an objective under expanding secondary learning opportunities for all students. I bring it up because I also think that as conversations are happening this summer related to task force, et cetera, that I think that needs to be part of that bucket. Also needs to be front and center as we move forward with these goals also. As we're looking at objectives to, you know, make sure that we're able to help our students meet these goals. So, like I say, it sounds like fairly disjointed, but I wanted to get that into the conversation. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pritchett. Mr. McMillan.
Yeah. So I guess this is kind of our, you know, since this is our strategy offsite, I don't want to be limited to this, this slide and these goals necessarily, although I, I'd really like to bring up the partnership agreements and districts. I guess they overlap in many of these areas. But I just want to make sure and kind of ask, you know, if we're looking toward the future at this gathering that we're doing here, you know, I'd like to see continued focus on it. I mean, I'd like to, you know, even though it's, it's not a specific goal here, I think in my mind, it's one of the main goals that I have as far as the State Board and you know, I just, I would like to continue to improve the model. You know, maybe there's ways to improve it. Maybe there's ways to collaborate more with districts. You know, I just, I really feel that it, I know we don't have it on our agenda anymore every month. But in my mind, you know, it's, it's one of the areas that I'd like, you know, to focus if we're talking about the upcoming year. That's one thing that I really, if, if nothing else, I would like to focus on that. The second area is, the second I thought, and it's not on the goals, is our dashboard. Just because the A to F, unfortunately, it was passed by the legislature. I would like to kind of, you know, I don't want the dashboard to go away or to, you know, the focus to go away. I'd like to improve it and basically assume that at some point, the A to F is going to go away, that it's going to be repealed. So let's just assume that and continue to improve the, the dashboard, you know, the points of pride. You know, I just think that there's areas that it can be more dynamic, it can be more informative, it can be, you know, because, yeah, just, I don't want it to be put on the, on the know, because, yeah, just, I don't want it to be put on the, on the back burner just because A to F, we lost that battle. I, I'd like, you know, everybody to just say, basically, the dashboard is the real thing, the A to F is a nuisance, a problem, giving bad information. So I'd, I'd like to be able to say to the public, focus on the dashboard. I think that is the best area, and to that extent, I'd like to keep improving it.
So, so to those two points, with respect to parent dashboard, happy to continue to improve it. I think it is absolutely a, a point of pride in and of itself for the board, for the department. I think it, it is, it serves wonderfully. But like anything, I think that it can be improved. It is terrific as it is, and your point that it is more impactful and more helpful than a, than any sort of a reductive system is absolutely right, right on. Relative to partnership districts, you should be aware that we will be sharing with you a presentation in June on partnership districts, on their, their RGA meetings. In addition, I anticipate that we will have a presentation at your August board meeting as well on partnership districts as we explain the effect of the absence of state testing this spring on a new cohort of partnership districts. So I anticipate that you will be hearing on partnership districts in June and in August at a bare minimum, and conceivably in September as well. We would hope that we would be welcoming our new superintendent in Benton Harbor. We would like to welcome him directly. And, and when I say directly, I'm, I'm talking about face-to-face. So we hope that we're able to have him at our August board meeting and to welcome him in person. I spoke with him just a couple of days ago. He's doing well. He's, he's an outstanding individual, and so hopeful about his work in, in Benton Harbor with the board, with the community, with the staff, with our young people there. So by no means are we going to lose sight of our work with partnership districts. We are extraordinarily engaged in, in that work. And Mr. McMillan, as you point out, a number of these goals are absolutely related to our partnership district work. No, no question about that. And in fact, if we do better in our partnership districts, all else being equal, our metrics will improve statewide. So just a reflection on that. Dr. Pew, a comment maybe?
I didn't know what you were going to say, but Tom, your, your point are very well taken, and I, I definitely agree with, with both, both of your points. And I think to the earlier point that I made and that Dr. Rice gave more substance to, is I think of things, you know, what, what drives these things? What makes a district fall into the category of a partnership district? And then how can we address those things first? So then we don't end up with a partnership district. I look at the, the dashboard as a way to monitor and to determine which direction we're going in, take a temperature for, for where we are. I mean, from a public health, if I use the public health example, let's think of obesity. Some people might just look at the obesity rates, or might look at individuals, whether or not they're obese. I would rather look at what are the drivers of, of that. So, you know, what are somebody's eating habits? Or, you know, what are the systemic issues? You know, do people have access to grocery stores? And then, you know, we look at the scale, the, the way that you monitor or determine whether or not somebody is obese. And then, so I compartmentalize these things, but the thing that I would like to start with first as a goal is what leads to the, the outcomes. And so going further, further upstream. And I would hope that we can do more of that in this time. I think we better understand that some things, you know, we, if we don't get a hold of things that drive the negative outcomes, as well as, you know, making sure that we have the tools in place to be able to monitor and catch things earl, as early as possible. So those are just, just some of my thoughts on, on, on what you raise, is that I do agree. I think it's just how we go about determining what are the goals and then what are the things that we will measure, and then how, what, how do we measure those things? What are the tools that we use to measure it?
And so, and so, Dr. Pew, just a, a memory from our earlier conversations, we talked about getting upstream.
Yes.
And rather than simply focusing on downstream and where we were downstream, getting upstream, it, it's reminiscent of conversations I had with my, my old friend, Dr. Charles C. Warfield, may he rest in peace, who used to reflect upon getting upstream and seeing who was doing what to our babies, not focusing on them as adults, but focusing on them as youngsters and how we do better with them earlier, so that they are more capable, more equipped to go out into a world and fend for themselves and, and succeed, and not just succeed, but thrive in, in the world. So thank you for reminding us of the importance of the upstream, because I do think it is hugely important.
And I'm, I'm going to let it go after I say this. And I would refer to it as being insanity if we just focus on, and, and not referring to what you said, Board Member McMillan, but if we are just focusing on scores and, and that's all we're focusing on, but not moving to a place where we're more focused on what drives these, these outcomes. I, I refer to it as, as insanity.
Okay. All right. Very, very well. And, and, but, but I appreciate that amendment to your comments, Dr. Pew, not, not speaking directly about anyone, but rather reflecting upon the need not to get overly narrow. I actually hear that from all eight board members, not casting a narrow net, not getting overly fixated on any given area or metric, but preparing kids in, in, in broadways and reflecting upon their capability in broadways and not getting overly narrow with overly narrow metrics. Board, I will cast a net for additional comments or, or thoughts?
Well, I mean, Dr. Rice, so if there's no comments, what, I just want to make sure we done, basically, other than public comment and comments from board, or is there anything else?
So are you talking about in this meeting?
Yes.
So I, I see a comment from Dr. Albridge.
Okay.
I was going to sum up the strategic ed plan conversation, and then once we did that, we would be, we would be pivoting toward the end of the, we would be pivoting toward the end of the meeting.
Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. McMillan.
Yeah, if I could. So if that was the case, I, I did, you know, want to mention as far as a potential goal or something to stay focused for the coming year would be, you know, in light of the Gary B. decision, and though I'm pleased with, you know, what, what, what the, the entire Circuit Court decided to do yesterday, and I don't think it's going to necessarily impact the agreement or the settlement, but, you know, just thinking about this, the, you know, what the, the plaintiffs, their concerns, I want to make sure that, you know, a lot of those concerns as far as the learning environment and, you know, the health or the, you know, the rodents, the, you know, the problem with teacher, you know, teachers not being there and shortage, you know, a lot of temporary teaching, you know, that we look and make sure that those things are not continuing, whether it be in, in the Detroit schools or in any district in Michigan. So, you know, I guess I would just, I, I think that things have improved considerably, but, and, you know, this is a local-controlled state, but, you know, if things are, are bad, I, I think that we should be able to be alerted to that and try to assist with those. I don't know if those are, you know, melded in with a lot of the partnership districts, if, if there are any of those concerns still or situations, but I, I think that that would, you know, we shouldn't just let it go and say, okay, there's a settlement, and that's, that's it if, if there is going to be one. But just making sure that, that those situations are not continuing.
Sure. I think it's a point well taken. Our work, DPSCD is a partnership district. Our work with DPSCD continues irrespective of what happens in the, in the Gary B. lawsuit. We do see progress in DPSCD. It is significant progress, but I think anybody in DPSCD would say the same thing, that we continue to have a progress to make. President Albridge?
Thank you. I was just going to add a final comment that I, I still think these are good goals for us to have and keep the goals as general in nature as possible, because I think the real work comes with the objectives and the tactics that come after the goals. So that's, I, I just wanted to say I, I still support these goals, and, you know, I, I hope that when we, the point where we vote on them, that we vote on them as a whole, and, and then we really get to work on focusing what the, the objectives are going to be that go along with them.
Thank you, President Albridge. And certainly, the goals are the province of, of the board. The narrower strokes, of course, are the province of 831 LEAs. You know, how do you get to different, different goals? And we have a responsibility to help them get there in, in our work. So appreciate that support. Dr. Pew, a comment maybe?
I didn't know what you or, or Dr. Albridge were going to say, so I didn't know if it was necessary. And to, 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 I just wanted to, President Albridge's points were very well, well-stated. I do agree that we don't want to get too tight, and we know that the tactical is where we're, tactical as well as how we do, do measurements is where we will put some emphasis, or want to see some emphasis. To the point, you know, of the whole literacy issue and making sure that all of our children are made whole as it, as it relates to that. It is, we are talking, we, we definitely agree on local control. I am happy that we are able to offer to our school districts supports through the partnership model. I think one of the things that we, we will fall short on and would be remiss if we didn't talk about the, the ask of children in Detroit, the ask of, of Dr. Vidi, the superintendent, has no problem with the state making sure that what they saw happen, the degradation of their school while under state control, that, that that be, that they're, that they receive some sort of, that the damages be, be addressed there. So while we do talk about local control, we do have to be mindful that what occurred in Detroit occurred while local control was, was taken from, from that district.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Pew. Board members, any additional comments or questions? Seeing and hearing none. Next board meeting, as we continue our work on strategic education plan, we will be resharing with you mission and vision, guiding principles, and some recommendations for changes in those guiding principles from a half decade ago, your goals as lightly amended today. And then finally, we will share with you some preliminary metrics for your consideration next month. And if you have thoughts about metrics in each of these goal areas, we would welcome you sharing those with us in advance of. This is going to be a challenging endeavor, and we don't think that the metrics should drive the entire conversation, certainly, but we also think that we have to have some way to measure the goals, in the absence of which, one wonders the extent to which we're making progress. So we don't suggest that the metrics are the be-all, end-all, but we also don't think that goals in the absence of metrics are either. It is 11:39, board, and at the risk of being considered heartless, I'm going to plow forward and ask if there are board member, I beg your pardon, we have a question for Ms. Snyder. And we would be happy to share definitions of, of each goal as, as we move forward in our work in, in June. We don't have any issues with that at all. Not a, not a problem. We are to, to President Albridge's point, though, we are going to be broad in our goals, and the strategies associated with those, that goal attainment, those strategies are going to be overwhelmingly local. We're going to provide guidance, we're going to provide support enormously, but in a local-controlled state, those strategies, those tactics are overwhelmingly at the, at the local, at the local level. That said, we are at the point of board member comments and then moving into public participation. Any board member comments? Okay. Seeing none. Public participation. Marilyn, are there any individuals who wish to address the board at today's meeting?
I do not have anybody who has contacted us regarding offering public comment today. Opportunity was provided for that. No.
Okay. All right. Very good. That, that said, I've got, I've got a finger in, in my screen from Dr. Pew, and, and then Ms. Fecto.
There were, well, first of all, I, I just want to make sure that we are keeping the folks in mid-Michigan and our thoughts and prayers as we're trying to figure out how we're going to get through another emergency. So this is huge, as people are looking for normalcy in their lives that we're hit with another crisis yet again. So just keeping them in, in your thoughts and prayers. And also, I cannot remember the school. There was a presenter at, at the last meeting at our state board meeting who talked about a school that was being, being closed, or the teachers were, were laid off. I can probably pull it up really quick. Pontiac. If we could get some info, if anyone has any information on that, that was the Avondale School District, and it was the teachers that were, the alternative school where the, where computers or whatever were taking, you know, technology was taking the place of, of teachers. If we could get some information on that, that would be helpful if we know anything about that. That sounds horrible to me, and I would like to get a better insight on what's going on there, and if, if there's anything that we would get involved with. Again, it could be a local issue, but that sounds pretty dire there. And if it was driven by anything that, that we, any of the executive orders or the school closures, then I would, I would want to hear about that.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Pew. Ms. Fecto?
I'll make sure I, I'm not muted. I just wanted to, I didn't-
I just wanted to, I didn't say anything with regard to the goals. And I know I had brought it up earlier that I think improving our special education is important. Wasn't that long ago, we were on the Needs Improvement or Needs Intervention list from the feds. And I know, and I hope that that will be a top focus when we look at strategies and, you know, sub-goals or whatever, that that will be incorporated. And including it, it's not in the early education. It says, you know, we talked about secondary education for all, didn't use for all in the early education. But I just want to make sure that that is really paid attention to, especially since the COVID crisis. I also want to just respond to about the Gary B. I can say I am deeply disappointed in it. I understand people have different opinions. But I just, for the life of me, don't know how we are going to improve literacy unless we come up with a mechanism to, we look at financing of our districts in a fair, much more fair and balanced way. And so I, while on one hand, you know, not wanting court intervention or whatever, but I wish there was also a strong political will among all of us to recognize that there is gross underfunding. And when people talk about, you know, we talk about these partnership districts, it's been driven by the funding mechanisms that we have. And it is not just a matter of guidance. It's a matter of making sure they have the resources they need. And I wish if we all truly care about things like equity and literacy and the poorest students and the rodents in the classroom, that we could all recognize that that is the critical driver that creates these sorts of environments. So I just wanted to get that off my mind. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fecto. And I appreciate your comments and agree that much of what we are talking about is a function of resources. And those resources have to be addressed moving forward. Marilyn, public participation. You indicated that there were no individuals who wished to address the board at today's meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I still do not have any requests for public participation today.
Okay, very good. Future meeting dates, board, will be Tuesday, June 9, Tuesday, August 11, and Tuesday, September 8, all at 9:30. We are at 11:46 a.m. adjourned. Enjoy the gift of time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.